We're good. All right, welcome to the November 7th Board of Trustees meeting. Let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mary Jo, would you like to lead us? All right, for the record, this meeting is being recorded and we're broadcasting it on our Village YouTube channel. Let's start with the public hearing. Can I get a motion to open the public hearing?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, first public hearing is local law O. We're reducing, we're requesting to reduce the village's speed limit to 25 miles per hour. This local law has been on the books for a couple of weeks now, sorry, a couple of months now. And I think it's a good thing to try to keep our children, residents, pets safer. People speeding in this village, and it's very difficult to walk safely, especially also with our bicyclists. That being said, is there any questions from the board? Any questions from the public, comments? All right, I'd like to, I'll make a motion. Oh, you do that with the SECPRO, thank you.
I'd like to ask for a, somebody to offer a resolution. I'll read the resolution, then I will ask for someone to offer it in a second. So whereas the Board of Trustees has determined that it is in the best interest of the village to adopt Local Law O 2022, amending Chapter 227-10 speed regulations to protect the residents and others who use village roads. This resolution enacts Prop. Local Law O as Local Law 14 of 2022, and whereas the Board has determined that it is the lead agency for the purposes of SECPRO, and as further determined that consideration of the fit local laws is a type 2 action, requiring no further action under SECPRO. Okay, so now I'd like to ask someone to offer that resolution in a second.
Before we vote on it, so I think I expressed this last time. Is it going to be on Stonetown Road?
It's going to be on every road in the village.
And number two, I think I had asked, were there any statistics that we've had people hit that because it's 30, not 25, or there, I mean, I know we think it's a good thing, but have we really had bicyclists, people hit? I mean, I really don't think, we're not going to be able to enforce it. And is it just something that we're doing to make it look like we're...
I think our police can enforce it.
They're not enforcing 40, I mean, I'm 30.
They don't enforce stop signs, they don't enforce...
I see no one going 25 on Stonetown Road, no one, no. Nobody going to that Plandock train station. And it, I just don't, and then I know it's, it seems to me like a gesture, but I just don't see it...
I think it's more than a gesture, let's see, Rosalind State's already done it, East Hills has done it, Russell Gardens, Stuart Manor, Manor, and Kensington have already lowered their speed limits to 25. I mean...
I mean, there are statistics that, I mean, we can't, we can't help people from speeding, that's happening. There are statistics that slower speed does actually make a huge difference.
Well, New York City did a study that the death rate at 35 miles an hour, 30 miles an hour, 25 miles an hour, and there is, there is data that supports that. I mean, Mary Jo's right, though, it's not really enforceable, but...
I guess the thing that I would ask is like, would there be, certainly like if it's a non-village road like Port Washington Boulevard is, it's exempt, would we consider exemptions on other main or territorial roads or not? That, to me, would be the question to ask, because I think, as a rule, I think it's good, but maybe there are exemptions.
Like, I see it on, in the, you know, where people are running stop signs on Country Club or Ice, you know, all the back, I get it there, but, you know, where there, where there are people walking around, but I don't see it on Manhasset Woods, and I don't see it on Stonetown, but, you know, probably the minority.
We've had multiple people on Manhasset Woods in the past ask us to slow things down. That's why we have one of the speed, I don't know if it's still there, we had one of the speed...
The, yeah, the splashing signs, that say they're going too fast.
Doesn't work, yeah.
Listen, it's, it's something to try, if it doesn't work, we can always change it back.
Well, I don't think you ever change it back.
You can, there's, there's no reason not to.
You know, for the one person who's going to see a 25 and say, you know, I'm going to slow down. It's one person that's going slower, I guess.
Just in the past, we have had some speed studies where we have a speed machine that actually reports of the speeds of the cars. So we do have, you know, a lot of data that shows that, you know, especially Stonetown is a speedway, but even through streets like Wood Valley and all that, people tend to go a little too fast, especially on those...
Cherrywood, we had this, we had this speed sign in Cherrywood on my block, and the people, the average was like 37 miles an hour.
Yeah, I know, that's a very curvy kind of street level.
I mean, I think the only thing I would point out is, is that Stonetown, if that's a commercial road, it's actually the road that we put a walking pad on, so...
Which is why, with the walking pad, which, by the way, I would like to make sure it's very safe.
We should in our newsletter, because I drive it every day on the way to work. So there are runners who refuse to use the...
Oh, they're on the other side?
Yeah, and they come around that turn by Manhasset Woods Road, and it's, I'm surprised one of them hasn't got hit, because you can't see them at all until they come around that turn. So, you know, we may want to remind residents that, you know, these used, yeah, now runners like to run facing oncoming traffic. I get it, but when there's a path...
I will put it on this one, it's, it's no problem.
You know, just be careful on Stonetown, it's very narrow when you make that turn after Manhasset Woods Road.
All right, memo taken, I will put it in.
So should we go forward with the resolution?
I would like to.
May I?
Yes, so I'll, should I make the resolution?
May I?
Then I will.
Okay, your resolution to enact Local Law O, Local Law 14, do I have a second?
One second.
Okay, I'd like to call the board, trustee Ludeowski?
Aye.
Trustee Harrington?
Aye.
Trustee Dorfman?
Aye.
Trustee Janice?
Aye.
Trustee Collins?
Yeah.
And Mayor?
Trustee Frankel?
Oh, sorry, that's a problem, he's like on my shoulder. Trustee Frankel?
Aye.
And Mayor?
I vote aye.
Okay, the motion, the resolution passes. Next local law?
I'll let you do that one, because that's, that's your local law.
Oh, this is my baby.
That's your law.
The next local law is Local Law P regarding record retention and disposition. This is upbeat today because New York State Archives, who is just the agency in charge of all government records, has changed the schedule, which tells us how long we have to keep each document. They've changed the name of the schedule, and our code refers to the old schedule, which is named MU1, and the new schedule is called LGS1. So basically, this law just changes the name of the schedule wherever it appears in New York retention and disposition law. Any questions or comments from the board or the public? Okay, there being none, I do have a resolution. Whereas the Board of Trustees has determined it is in the best interest of the village to adopt Local Law P, amending Chapter 38 records to reflect the adoption of the LGS1 record retention schedule, and this Prop. Local Law P will become Local Law 15 of 2022. Whereas the Board has determined it is the lead agency under SECPRO, and this is a type 2 action requiring no further, requiring no further action. Somebody like to go through this resolution, through vote? Okay, I have trustee Frankel. Do I have a second?
Do we need to let this age at all, or...
Well, it was on last month.
Okay.
Yeah, no, we're good.
No.
All right, I'll second.
Okay, okay, by a show of hands, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, any abstentions? Okay, the board has kissed. And then, last one's Local Law Q. You want to do that, Mayor?
Yep, so Local Law Q came around when we were interviewing new candidates for Code Enforcer, which I'll get to a little later. And one of the suggestions from one of the candidates was if we didn't have, so he found that in his work in other villages and throughout his career, he found that a lot of illegal activities tend to happen on weekends when code enforcement might not be as robust as during the week. And his suggestion was that if we banned tree removals on the weekends, it makes code enforcement easy, because you don't have to check who has a permit and who doesn't have a permit, because there's no way, there's not necessarily a good way to access the information when you're out on the road. During the week, they can call into Heather, they call into Peter, and see if there's an existing permit. But on the weekends, they couldn't do so. So that being said, by having no tree removals on the weekends, it made for a code enforcer's job significantly easier. And additionally, I've heard from people, or residents, who have said, you know, it's one of those noisy things, you're trying to enjoy your weekend, and you're sitting there with an all-day thing, and cutting a couple of trees down could take six to eight hours. So to enjoy your homes, it was another good suggestion, kind of like how we don't allow commercial landscaping on the weekends. This would go hand in hand with that. So that's kind of where this came from, from two prongs, quiet enjoyment and to keep easier for code enforcement. This is the second month we've had this public hearing, so I don't know if there's any questions from the board members?
Yeah, I think I asked this last month, but I just want to clarify, so to that point around commercial use, so that they homeowners are just doing it themselves, are they allowed to do it? Or, because I thought we talked about maybe putting this in the landscaper section, or I just want to double check.
Do we, do we have homeowners that try to cut down a tree?
Really? I guess it's a little true. I actually did, I actually did it once.
Yeah, well, yeah.
It doesn't surprise me. Exactly. But we also were going to put in here the provision that with approval from village administrator that it can happen on the weekends, because there's going to be emergencies.
Yeah, yeah, what if, yeah, what if...
And that was, that was supposed to be added in on here, so with, with that caveat. Oh, it's in, I didn't see it on here, sorry.
Understate waiver, the village administrator should be permitted to waive the requirements upon application presenting good cause for the purposes of this section, good cause, unfulfilled, but not the village to do such things as safety concerns.
I was looking at the other one, sorry.
Is this full tree removal, not just, what about pruning, cutting it back?
That's just as loud.
Well, you know, we have a certain caliber that warrants a tree removal permit, so otherwise it would be landscaped. Yeah, so if it's, you know, so you have like a four-inch tree, it doesn't come under something that needs a permit, so then that would be not under this type of...
Okay.
Yeah, but what if you have a, like, there are trees with big branches, what if they prune that big branch? Trim that big branch, prune the branch, yeah.
So why doesn't that come under landscape? Why doesn't that come under commercial landscape? They wouldn't need a tree permit for that.
Right, for a, for a...
For pruning.
No.
No, no tree permits for pruning.
No, I know, that's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying. So pruning comes under, under, under commercial landscape, and then that would prevent the large limbs, yeah. Because like you pointed out, you know, even trimming could take, you know, hours and hours, or, you know...
Yeah, right.
So that would be covered by the existing landscaping law, and there is a waiver for that, people would like it, so...
Right, and that was already built.
Okay.
So I think we're pretty good, anybody from the public have any questions on this? That being said...
May I read the resolution?
Yes, please.
Whereas the Board of Trustees, the Board of Trustees has determined that it is in the best interest of the village to adopt Local Law Q, amending Chapter 219 entitled Trees, Shelves, Wash, Gras, and Leaves by ending sections Article 2 entitled Tree Removal, prohibiting removal of trees on Saturdays or Sundays. And whereas the Board has determined it is the lead agency under SECPRO, and that this is a type 1 to action requiring further action. Somebody like to give a vote, please?
Oh, I'll offer that.
Mayor? Any second?
I'll second.
Trustee Ludeowski? Okay, by a show of hands, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Okay, thank you, the law has been enacted.
All right, next, we have a special exception hearing for Mr. Isaacoff on 10 Peachtree, who is looking to maintain a retaining wall in the village right away. So since we are actually, there's a stenographer remote, if you want to state your name and address for the record.
Sure, Michael Rann, 39 West Main Street, West Vancouver, 10771. Mr. Mayor, trustees, my name is Michael Rann from North Coast Civil, and I'm here this evening representing the owners, and we're seeking people to maintain a portion of a retaining wall that has just been built that doesn't approach it to the right way, to suit it for... David, I don't know if the trustees have a, or Mayor have a chance to get to the site, but I do have some photographs I can pass out to, to suit the wall.
I did go by, I live two blocks away, so I actually walked by today.
All right, so Peachtree Lane does slope, so there are a number of retaining walls kind of throughout the, throughout the street. So it isn't uncommon to require on both sides of the property, especially next to the driveway. The whole, the first photograph is looking at the vehicles to the right, you can see we're on the high side, and then the second photograph coming from the neighbor's property towards ours. Entire driveway before they built the wall, it was just a driveway, and then it sloped off, so it didn't have a flat area, so somebody getting out of the car became difficult to use the passenger side. So it created a flat lawn space, again, just so when someone gets out of the car, they're not falling onto the slope. And that really was necessitated the retaining wall. So as it comes to the right way, it does step down, so at its closest point, it's only maybe one course high, about eight inches, and then it steps up as it moves towards the back. So we're looking just to maintain it, what's there, and seek this board's approval.
Mike, how long has it been there?
It was just, it was just recently built.
And did the homeowner get a permit to build it?
He has a retain, he has a permit to build the retaining wall along the entire side. It was supposed to stop at the, at the property line. The contractor extended it further, and wasn't found out until we did a final survey and submitted it, and it came to the village's attention.
Can I ask our building superintendent to speak up to this?
Sure, so, yeah, just to give you approximate distances, so that scaling the survey from the edge of the pavement to the top, that's about 13 feet. Scaling with, where you're showing the wall, it's about 4 feet or so from the, from the end of the property.
The approach is now feeding to the right.
Right. I would just say that, you know, it does have steps, which goes down to a very, very low area, you know, I would, you know, again, we don't want things to go right away typically that could, like clouds or other things. I would just ask the applicant, it's possible to maybe remove that first step, which is a very low area, that would be, you know, maybe nine or 10 feet back. But, you know, again, the permit was, was, it was supposed to stop at the property line.
Right, which you issued, and they needed a variance, I believe, for this wall, correct?
Yes. Right, they were rebuilding, this was, just a little history, this was a wall that had collapsed further in the back, and they replaced that wall with, you know, a more contemporary wall in its same location, but they did get a variance for that.
Okay. So it sounded like your suggestion was for the applicant to split the difference here and remove one of the first steps?
Yeah, the first, well, the first step in that, in that wall, that would, that would keep it, you know, back nine feet or so from this.
Yeah, that would, it's about maybe three blocks, so they're 16 inches each, so it's about four feet, which would leave about, yeah, about eight or nine feet from the edge of road, which is kind of a standard distance from edge of road to property line.
And, and the way I see it, the grain is not such that it couldn't just be graded walking through it. Again, it's a different road.
And it would be an area that you would be stepping out of a car necessarily?
No.
I'm assuming you'd be stepping out of a car farther.
Further, yes, correct, correct.
It's kind of hard to read on the photograph, but is there anything between that last step?
Yeah, gutter. I just took a picture.
Oh. So there, there are like rocks as well that come out towards the gutter of the roadway? Is that, I guess that's the neighbors?
Yeah, there's a couple of kind of landscaped, there's a couple of landscaped rocks that could be more aesthetic feature, but they could be removed to clear out that, that area.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, given that we had this program trying not to insert there are any obstructions along the gutter line.
Right.
We'd want to clean that up as well.
So I think it would be, the board would have to accept the wall, remove that, you know, that single course, and leave either not be cleared in the right way.
I, you want to say something more?
I was just going to say, I mean, we should circulate that, I know we've gotten a couple of questions the last couple of months around that policy, we should circulate it again so everybody can see it, about the rocks on the right way, but just looking at it, I think it's fine. The problem we were having was when there were multiple rocks along.
Blocking, it's safe.
Like one rock on its own, right, gate issue, but under, under the policy.
Right, 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 right.
No, no, I, I'm just trying to lead the spirit up rather than the letter up.
So I think I would be in favor of that if the applicant agreed to take away that first course. However, Jeff, oh, sorry, you can pass it around. Jeff, you're going to say something, I know.
I was, in, in the past, when things of this nature were granted by the board, the board required two things, one is that this will be a license to maintain a redable to the board, and that the owner would be required, or whoever takes the property, to remove it at the requirement of the board, totally at the board's discretion. And second, that the owner would agree to identify and defend the village with respect to any issues that arise regarding that retaining wall, which would be on the village's property.
So I assume that would be acceptable?
Yeah, it's still the standard.
So those rocks that are there, they're on the neighbor's property?
Yeah.
They have to come out, too. But he doesn't have access to his neighbor, but we can ask the neighbor to roof the rocks. But they're definitely the neighbor's rocks.
It looks like, they're on the low side of the wall.
They're the village's rocks.
Yeah.
I guess, yeah, and this is the village's retaining wall, too. Peter, I will give, I will gift you those rocks if you want, I'll bring them to your desk. All right, so with the contingencies that our village attorney asked for, in addition to removing that first course of stone and removing that one rock that probably shouldn't be there, and we'll talk to the neighbors about the other ones, I would be fine with granting this special... Is this a special use?
Yeah, special use.
It's a request, it's a special use, but I would also ask that if there's a resolution that includes this, it'd be deemed a request for a license or a report by the village in time if they're agreeing to an extension and defend it.
Yes, I would make that, I'll make that resolution, motion.
Is there a second?
One second. Okay, I'll call the board, trustee Ludeowski?
Aye.
Trustee Harrington?
Aye.
Trustee Dorfman?
Aye.
Trustee Collins?
Aye.
Trustee Frankel? Mayor?
Aye.
And just for the purposes of SECPRO, I would respectfully suggest that it be a free attack on action or a type 2 action, that it would have no significant impact on the environment and no further action if it's taken by the board, if the board identifies it as a speed agency. If there's a motion...
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second. Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good name.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, excellent. Um, let's, thank you, Peter, you are dismissed. Thank you for staying on, I appreciate your help for this. Public comment, anybody have anything to say to our lovely board today?
I just want to say that I, I'm thrilled that we lowered the speed limit to 25, thank you to the board. It honestly, I have a good feeling about this. Especially of mine, there are so many crazy drivers. Hopefully this will, you know, maybe drill it into them, so thank you.
Yes, and your brother will be driving soon, so let's remind Stephen to obey the speed limit.
Good idea.
Maybe we should ask Mitchell if he wants to find out what he's... Other than that, any other public comment? I guess that's no, then let's pivot to our special presentation.
Do we want to have the women's club first?
Sure, let's have the women's club first, Mrs. Derso.
Hi.
You can stay there, you can come here, you can, wherever you...
Hi, I'm Neanderso, I represent the women's club of Flower Hill, and I was asked to come speak to you this evening in regards to a tree that we had, a Norway spruce donated to the village, and it was planted already.
Okay, I'm having a heartache.
A Norway spruce tree was planted in the park, and we're seeking board approval to use it for a tree lighting, an annual, or annual tree lighting. This year, they will be on December 4 at 5:30. We will also be donating a menorah to be displayed as well. The event is being held the same night as Light the Night in an effort to bring the community together. The rain date for both events will be the following Sunday, December 11. So we plan to provide the lights and the tree topper. We'd like to serve just light refreshments. We're going to try to secure a visit, which I'm sure from Santa, and potentially Carol's as well. We would provide all necessary supplies and setup, and we begin around 4:30 in the evening, just before Light the Night, which is usually starts at 5 o'clock. And then we would just request maybe a garbage that we could put things into, and then we would drag it back to the building at the end of the evening. We anticipate the whole thing to take about an hour. So we would hope that you would support the group, adding this event to our community, and hope that you can join us if you approve it.
Well, first of all...
Any questions?
First of all, welcome back to the...
Thank you.
Village, the Women's Club, it's been a few years.
Yeah, we took, we took a two-year pause.
So I think it's great that you guys are back. I'm very excited that you're going to do the Light the Night, that's a great event that, I remember it since when I first moved here, like 22 years ago. You know, I know a couple of years it didn't happen, but I think it's a great event for the village. Thank you for donating the tree, which we already had planted. Just for the record, the village is, I'm working with Rich to get that pole, the, the light pole, the land post nearby, to have an outlet built into it so that we can provide electricity for, for that.
It's a moving process right now, so we'll...
Right, I also understand you're going to have menorah as well, because I did speak to another one of your board members. I think it's a great thing, I'm thankful you guys are willing to make the donations and that you're willing to do these events for us. And do we need to pass a motion or anything to allow this event, or it's just...
The gift of the torch? Not, the tree is a gift, yeah.
Accept the donation.
We can hit for, offer a motion to accept the, the gift of the tree, the donation.
All right, I'll make that motion, and allowing, and I guess in the same breath to allow the event to happen on December 4th, with the rain day of December 11th.
Okay, one other thing is that we will need insurance prior to the event. Your insurance certificate?
We have insurance.
I need an insurance certificate, naming the village as an insurance insurer, not just the type of the policies, but stipulation, and as per certain campaigns.
That should be ongoing, right, a blanket certificate, right?
Or they're not...
Do you have one specific for this event?
Yes. And I have another question, will the menorah be lighting?
Depends on when night it is running.
Well, no, I mean, it will have electricity to light.
I believe, I mean, I think they're, they're working on what to get right now to make it easy, so we haven't identified it, and we're working on it.
Okay. Great, and it's important, you know, these days, particularly to make sure it's accessible.
Yeah, all right, I guess I'll make the motion then for this event. Do I have a second? Is everyone in favor?
I'm going to recuse myself, as my wife is sitting on the board of the...
That works for me, so all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, we have the one abstention. All right, well, thank you very much.
Second?
Claire, Claire, I think, seconded, right? I thought I heard you. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Sarah, the floor is yours.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Thanks for pulling my presentation.
It'll be, instead of you trying to do wirelessly and hooking up to here, just tell me to go forward and backwards.
Okay, great. So, hi, everybody. Uh, my name is Sarah Schaper Brown. Uh, nice to meet you there, Rose Bowman, Christie's, and I'm here. Um, so I was asked by Gary to give a presentation tonight, um, on my work and just some ways that we might be able to work together going forward. So, um, I'm part of a group with New York Seagran. So, um, New York Seagran is a NOAA-funded organization. There's a bunch of seagrass organizations across the United States. In New York, we focus on the Great Lakes and Marin District to help protect the environment in those areas and marine science to the shore and help educate, uh, the communities that live in those areas. So specifically, I'm working on Long Island Sound coastal area in Nassau County. I'm trying to help communities in this area become more sustainable and resilient to the, um, impacts of climate change and environmental issues. So really, my title is very long. It's Long Island Sound Sustainable and Resilient Communities Extension Professional. But, um, really what it means is that I'm here to help support this community and help you do what you want to do to help protect this area. So you can go to the next slide. Okay, um, so I'm part of a team of four other people, uh, all focused around Long Island Sound. So I'm at Nassau, as I said, there's someone in Suffolk County, someone in Westchester County, and two people in Connecticut, kind of splitting up the coast in Connecticut. All working to help support Long Island Sound, help to protect the environment, but really just trying to work locally and reach the groups that are working on the ground and doing great things here already. So you can go to the next slide. So, um, my work is really tied to a larger, um, management plan of the Long Island Sound study. It's an EPA-funded program. So there's a, a large management plan that has four focuses, habitat, wildlife, water quality, sustainable, resilient communities, and then sound science and inclusive management. I'm trying to help promote that sustainable, resilient communities focus. So really what I'm trying to do is help the communities, the environment, and economy in all these areas to make them sustainable to, to different changes. And the goals and outcomes of that work are really to, um, help promote, uh, a more regional coordinated effort to, um, address these issues. So we're not just working, you know, in our own, you know, specific areas, but thinking in the larger picture. Better trained community decision makers, um, infrastructure improvements, that could be roads, uh, you know, stormwater, wastewater infrastructure, things like that, utilities. Making sure that the government has the ability to provide services into the future as well as we see these changes. And also just making sure that products can actually, uh, get off the ground, get implemented, um, and make an impact. And then kind of woven into all of those goals are, um, making sure that we're thinking about, um, the society, the economic impacts of all of these decisions, and also incorporating, um, the concerns of environmental justice, environmental justice communities and how some of these changes and impacts might, um, you know, need to be considered in some of those situations. So you can go to the next slide. Uh, so this slide has a lot of information on it, but essentially, um, me and the rest of the, um, team across Long Island Sound have been speaking to a lot of people over the past year. Your village, I spoke to trustee Levandowski a few times. I've spoken to a lot of municipalities, a lot of community groups, nonprofits, uh, state, county governments, really just trying to understand what are the issues? What's really preventing everybody from, from getting the projects done? And then using that information to, uh, provide resources and tools and solutions to try and address some of those issues. So we, that's why we wanted to talk to a lot of different people because we want to get everybody's perspective. So out of this whole process, we are going to be eventually creating, um, some tools and resources, some training programs, workshops, some modeling tools, uh, and funding efforts and just trying to connect people with the solutions that may be out there already. Or we're gonna work on developing the solutions and trying to get people to, um, access those tools. So you can go to the next slide. So this is just a, a map showing all the people that, or groups that we've spoken to so far. You can see it's a pretty wide range of, uh, backgrounds and groups and geographic scope. So, uh, you know, just showing you that we've heard from a lot of people and, um, trying to put all those thoughts into one place to then take next steps. You can go to the next slide. So, uh, this slide is really just a, uh, summary of everything that we've heard. So I won't go through everything. You'll see the environmental concerns that we've heard. Generally, they're at the Long Island Sound region in the green box. But I really want to focus on the red box, which identifies all the challenges and barriers that we've heard over and over again from really everybody we've spoken to. Uh, it really comes down to living capacity. So organizations, groups, municipalities of all different levels, just not having the capacity to move projects forward. So, um, and that can mean a lot of things, you know, not having the time to actually think about planning for the future. But maybe not even having the, um, the skills or expertise on staff to even think about planning for the future, what, what steps needs to be taken. So that's something we've heard. Um, funding, of course, um, long-term and short-term. Lack of coordination really across all levels of government, maybe across stakeholder groups where needed. Sometimes codes and ordinances are out of date and they really not, or they're not effective or really, um, implemented in the way they should or, or enforced the way they should. And then political will sometimes is lacking, which kind of causes, um, you know, the, the, the idea to me not even get its first steps. And then, but there are a lot of great opportunities out there. Uh, there's a lot of great plans. There's a lot of great projects that are, you know, in the works. And there is a lot of great funding sources out there right now, um, infrastructure funds, a lot of funds for resilience that are, that are really, um, exciting. But we did hear that there is, uh, kind of a need for, um, local leaders and champions. There is a need for increased capacity. There's a need for having more information about how, how to navigate those funding opportunities and move projects along. There is a need for more coordination, maybe more information on code, best management practices, which are the BNP's, resilience planning. And then just having the opportunity to connect with municipalities that are like you, like, uh, you know, who have maybe done a similar project, had a similar issue and, um, you know, come apart from, from another. And then just having more basic understanding of some environmental issues and how to communicate that with your peers for your community. So you can go to the next slide. Uh, so this is just a list of, uh, training and education ideas that we've come up with, uh, that we, um, created based on what we've heard, um, and we'll be trying to, uh, go forward with, rolling these out over the next year or so. So not going to repeat really what I said, but this is kind of feeding off of what we've heard. So you can go to the next slide. And then specifically to, um, this program, we are going to be, uh, releasing a grant funding opportunity in a couple of weeks, hopefully. It's gonna be a modest amount of money, but really the intention is to allow municipality or community groups to apply for this funding, to then hire a grant writer or grant writing support if needed. So that you can get the staff maybe temporarily to help access a grant. Because I know, um, that was something we've heard a lot, that there, it's just not, you don't have the person on staff who's really has the time to, um, target a grant. So that's gonna be coming up soon. We're, we have a Buy State workshop, which will be December 1st, which, um, you all are invited to. It's, it's virtual. Um, it's, uh, gonna have a lot of different topics that, um, some of you might be interested in. Funding, uh, stormwater management is another topic. Shoreline restoration, and then the last one is, uh, land acquisition. And kind of all of these different topics, we're gonna present us from New York and Connecticut, just kind of speaking about products they, they were able to implement locally and hoping that kind of share knowledge and get people connected and things like that. And then, uh, we're also going to be developing a website, um, with, uh, resources that would be really user-friendly and accessible. We're doing, uh, a flood risk model, uh, which will be really interesting when that comes out, looking at, um, sea level rise, precipitation, and then groundwater level rise and how all of those different components actually show up as flooding locally. So I think that's, that's a really, gonna be a really useful tool. Um, and then just really trying to work with local groups and get projects going where needed, trying to fill gaps where needed. So, um, there's a lot of this bigger picture stuff going on, but I have, um, you know, made myself available to help the village if, if you guys need assistance moving anything along or trying to figure out any sort of, um, grant funding or projects, ideas, or anything like that. Uh, so you can go to the next slide. So when I spoke to Gary back in July, he said there was a few things the village was, were interested in maybe, um, you know, getting some information on and discussing. So one of the things was the National Septic Program. I'm sure you all heard of this. There's, uh, $20,000 in, uh, grant funding from the state, the county, available to, um, private property and, um, small businesses to replace their systems with an innovative system. And this is all for the goal of improving water quality, both surface water, so Manasas Bay, larger Long Island Sound, but also drinking water quality, because we drink the water that's below our feet. The program has been going on for a little over a year. I did get some updated numbers from Derek Betts, who's the, um, Soil and Water Conservation District Manager. He was not able to make it tonight, but he says that he is more, was more than happy to present at a future meeting. If you guys want to have more in-depth discussion about this program and how you can promote it or, um, maybe look into, uh, updating local code, um, to encourage or, um, you know, make it more incentivized to install these systems. So to date, there are 212 applications, 37 systems installed. And, uh, it's really important to, um, you know, know about this program because pretty much 9% of the shore of Nassau County is unsuited. So all of those subject systems are contributing to groundwater pollution. If you improve your system, it does reduce the natural.
Gary and I attended last year's Nassau County demonstration. You didn't go this year, did you?
I missed it.
I was missed it.
I know. But we, we got to see all the vendors. We got to see the products. I don't want to say in, in action, but we got a good feel, we got a good feel for, for what the system is doing with the requirements, so.
That's great.
We're, we're definitely, as a board, very interested in, uh, protecting the environment.
Good, yes. So he, um, he said he'd be more than happy to have a more detailed discussion with you. And there are other municipalities and different societies who, you know, started to update their code. So there are some good examples, if you didn't want to go that route, that I know Derek will be happy to share with you and kind of walk you guys through that if that was.
And build some model codes, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
And, yeah, so stuff, and just the Suffolk program has been a little, um, it's been going on a little longer. There's more villages that have updated their code out there, but they, you know, it's anything. So you can go to the next slide. Um, the other thing that Gary was, um, that mentioned, he mentioned to me when we met was, there is an interest in maybe looking into the feasibility of extending the sewer. And I know that there was an issue, maybe getting some funding lined up for that. So these are just some options, um, that I came up with. I don't know if anybody's looked into these or not yet, but I, um, you know, the EPA has a few, um, finance centers that are, really their main purpose is to help walk a municipality through, um, the best way to finance something like this. There's also this Clean Water Chance Need Survey, which is something that has not come out in, um, hasn't been out in, like, over four years. But it's essentially, uh, a state survey to try to get an idea of what the state needs for their infrastructure, uh, planning and efforts. So that the EPA can adequately allocate the proper amount of funding to the states, um, to meet those needs. So this is, it's a very simple survey. Um, if you have any idea at all estimate about how much you think, you know, a sewer extension would cost, um, you, you don't really need, you don't need an engineering report, you don't need any, you know, engineered stamp documents. All that information will be used to kind of support the state's request. So they're looking for municipalities to really be honest and open about, you know, what they need to provide with their services.
See, I have a question.
Yes.
So we've been trying to get funding for the sewer study.
Yes.
You know, to extend the sewer lines. I, you know, I have, I have an idea of how much the sewer study would cost, but I have no idea how much the sewer would cost. Is that something that I could let them know about or that I?
We, we need the study to determine the cost.
Study.
Yeah.
But you can't do, you can't do the sewer without the study.
Right. So I think you could contact the Environmental Facilities Corporation and let them know your situation. I think they want to know the big picture. So you need a feasibility study first, but your, your long-term goal is that extension, right? So they're gonna want to know the whole picture. Because eventually, you know, they only do these surveys every four years minimum. So I think that if you have a conversation with them and just let them know, you know, what your goals are, uh, I think they'll be able to help out. Yeah, the feasibility study is probably way easier to estimate the cost. The extension, you know, there's, there's been other extension products that have happened on Long Island. Right. You know, varying, uh, difficulties and all of that, but I think that they might be able to give you an estimate and be helpful.
My phone was sequel.
Okay.
Yeah, so I've got their estimate, but that was years ago already.
We also could talk to Port Washington Water Pollution District. They might have an idea of, well, I'm sure they.
They call our engineer. That's what they tell us.
Yeah, Gary, that's why we needed the sewer study.
I know we need the sewer study. I'm just saying is that there is some practical knowledge out there that we just need to figure out how to tap in without having to pay for the study. It's like, um, right, so.
Yeah.
They, in our conference, Brian and I, they, um, we, I can't, we, they didn't want to
I know.
Give us an answer until the study was done.
I know.
So we're kind of a catch-22.
Well, give me the high number. We'll go with the high number.
They, they wouldn't notice. They didn't even give us that number.
Yeah. So, so the Environmental Facilities Corporation, they pretty much have record, any, you know, wastewater infrastructure improvement product that's been funded through that, um, department. So, you know, they, they probably can tap into some records and give you a better estimate than maybe, uh, somebody else would, or more willing. Yeah. So you, you can go to the next slide. I'd be happy to, you know, have a conversation about this further if needed. I don't want to take up too much of your time. I did want to just share my contact, contact information with all of you and, and let you know that I am here to answer any old questions that you have. Um, this is the save the date for that workshop that I mentioned, um, free to, free to sign up.
I'll send this presentation to the board.
Sure, thank you. Yeah, it'll be recorded, so everybody can access it. If you don't have time, you tune in that day. And, um, yeah, with that, I just want to thank you for your time and thank trustee Levandowski for inviting me here. And, um, yeah, if you have any questions.
Yeah, any help you can provide to us going down the roads of sewer-ing would be greatly appreciated.
Yes.
Because I know that would really help improve the water quality of both of our harbors tremendously if we were all sewered.
Yes, definitely. Yep. Yeah, I, I think that's, that's probably the way to go. Um, but, you know, it's, it's kind of cost prohibitive, you know?
Right.
So, um, sometimes you just have to look at all the options and make a decision. So, yeah, feasibility study definitely must be first step.
Well, thank you again for coming. We really appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
I know, I know, we've been trying to schedule this for a while. I know, I know, we've been trying to schedule this for a while, so thank you.
Oh, no, it's fine. It's actually worked out.
Alrighty, thanks again.
Thanks.
Alright, let's get to our regular portion of the meeting. Ronnie, you want to run with the rest? Yeah, I turned the projector off.
Thank you. Okay, moving along, on to a regular meeting. The first item is we want to approve the September 12th meeting, which was amended, and the last meeting of October 3rd. So do I have a motion for minutes?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, on paper?
Aye.
Anybody here say no or staying put? Next are the claims. Noah Suzanne sent it out last week, so we'll have to take a look at that.
As always, I review all the bills, Suzanne drops them off on my desk, and nothing seemed out of place. The best thing I want to point out is we're saving a lot of money on our cell phone service, so thank you for, thank you for switching over, you and Rich to.
People walk around like, "Is T-Mobile anymore?"
So, that's always good.
But the price is right.
But the price is right. Just raise the old ransom pool the other week.
What, what service do we have?
T-Mobile. It's actually not that.
I heard T-Mobile's good.
I have T-Mobile, it works, it works, it works better than when I had Verizon.
Yeah, I heard T-Mobile's very good.
It's there, there.
People are on T-Mobile.
Getting a significant improvement. Alright, I'll make a motion to approve the claims.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
On paper?
Aye. Except for Max on landscaping.
A refusal. Okay, what I want to let the, the board know is that our financial software, which is called KBS, if you recall, we had asked them to give us a quote on moving to their cloud service, and the quote came in at over $70,000. So I went out to look for some alternative quotes from other, other companies. I've been in touch with two other companies that, one, one is called Harris, I've had experience, because so clear, it's very easy to use, they're user-friendly, and the other is Edmonds, which is used by many other villagers as a tenant. So I haven't been able to, like, hook up with the Harris rep, keep missing each other, but I did have a long conversation with the Edmonds rep, and I told him what I, what we were quoting, we didn't think we'd come anywhere close to that. So it's just, it's ongoing, I'm getting, you know, different price quotes, and to be continued.
This, this isn't something that would be a state contract for services or something?
The state contract is KBS.
Which is the most expensive one by, by a long shot. Yeah. And we're too big a village to do quick looks, so we're kind of between a rock and a hard place with this.
Yeah.
But it's definitely something we need to do, we want to get off of a server-based platform, which is always our long-term goal, so this will happen hopefully sooner than later when the vendors get back to us.
It's interesting, because I've been talking to a lot of other villagers who are all kind of in the same boat as us, wanting to go into the cloud. So maybe if we act as a group, we can get some, you know, some kind of a discount. So I know there are three other villages currently looking.
So there actually is.
Larger than us.
So there is no building superintendent's report, because we did not have an ARC this month?
That's right.
Missed a Lozniak? Village engine news report?
Yes. So I spoke to McGowan today, orange list is scheduled for next week. You know, that's a couple little items on there that they still.
They've, they've agreed to fix the things?
Well, they're gonna come out there, take a look at it, hopefully agree and do it.
Okay.
Second thing.
Because we have those, we have those driveways.
Yes.
Yes.
With the tack coat.
Yes.
Hopefully they take care of that.
Yes, because I've had one of the residents continue to remind me that she would like his tack coat removed. Yes.
Okay, so we're gonna bring that up.
Excellent.
Country Club, we sent out for some pricing from some contractors, we got three back.
So for the board, if you remember or don't remember, this is from last year's project. There were some deficiencies in the roadwork, and this is to correct those deficiencies.
Yes. The lowest price we got was from McGowan and again, $8,700.
Which is significantly lower than the other two bids.
Correct.
Is this something, Ronnie, we want to approve today?
Okay, I just want, I just want to mention the retainment, retaining the fate of this.
Yes.
This is theoretically going to come out of Angelo's Americans' retainer. Number one, are we able to do that, Jeffrey?
Did you check this?
Or do we go against the law?
Because it's for the job.
Yes. We really can't hold this, we're being hostage.
You have to provide it with more.
Right. Okay.
It's a county matter.
So we can do the work, pay the contractor, and then go after the bond for that one?
Alright, so in any event, it's not coming under the legislature.
Right, and it is necessary to do, because on Country Club, I think there's a large depression in the road, correct?
I've got a couple of quotes that.
It's gonna start undermining the road.
Yeah, so that needs to get done, and we're running out of, even though it was unbelievably nice today, we're running out of time. So, Ronnie, should we approve this today?
Absolutely.
You want, if we make a resolution, what do we do to do this?
Okay, well, we'll sort of, sort of resolution to John McGowan and sons, award them a contract for the repair on Country Club Road in the amount of $8,700. Do you want to take a seat on the home of that, anyway?
You've received three bids.
I haven't received any since you have.
Yes.
This was, we, we were, we put a drawing together and requested prices.
Right, so it's under the form.
Right.
It's under what, $30,000?
But the resolution could be that the village having conformed its procurement policy is then having obtained free quotes would be proceeding with the lowest responsible quote of the $700, subject to obtaining that and reimbursement against the performance bound.
Right, and which for the record, the lowest bidder was about $5,000 cheaper than the next highest, the next lowest bidder. So, thank you, Steve, for doing this work for us.
One other thing with respect to Thousand, I know, Gary, you had some questions with regards to the right-of-way. So I reached out to Thousand, he's willing to add in whatever we want, but I, there was some issues with the emails last week, and I don't think you were getting any of my emails to Thousand. So I don't know how.
I got your, I think I got a recent, I'm not sure.
Could you go first? So Thousand's question more or less was, with respect to the property lines, do we just want to go 50 feet into the property and show the property lines, or do we want the entire property line survey on, for every house?
Oh, no, I think. Yeah, I mean, I wasn't, I'm not talking about private properties.
You want the right-of-way, there.
But, yeah, you know, I would like to know if anybody's stance is in the right-of-way, you know what I mean? I'd like to give.
Right, no, I think we need to have a clean record of, so, yeah, for future, yeah.
But theoretically, the right-of-way is, is their property line, right? Is the property line.
Is, right, what should be their property?
Is parallel to the road.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know if it's parallel, we don't know.
So we.
If there, if there, right. We need the roadside property line, we don't need the back of the house, like the rear property lines.
Right.
Right, we just need the one, the two lines that parallel the roadway.
On each side?
Yeah, yeah.
Right. Alright, so I won't have them put the, you know.
Really worse. I mean, do, I think, do we have, do we have reference information on, like, any structures on the survey?
Well, I've sent him surveys of every house along the, along the front.
Yeah.
Every house in the.
They did.
Yeah.
So he has that information?
Oh, he does.
He'll put it on, but.
Yeah, I mean, not, I mean, they, there's some of the surveys, but like.
I don't want to make a deal on it, but I just, I felt like I was trying to get the right-of-way.
Yeah, so we'll have them just put that, you know.
The right-of-way value.
Right.
I just didn't hear a vote.
We have, I know, going back to the approving the McGowan contract. Can I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
And a second.
Second.
Okay. Will I show hands on paper?
Aye.
Okay, nobody's saying so, we're, we're votes now, thank you. Okay, um, anything else? Let's go over the truck. Anything new?
I can give an update.
Alright, yeah, we've been having issues with our new truck.
Without going into a long.
Detail.
Detail on it, there's some work that needed to be performed. The village is contending that this should be done under warranty, and the truck manufacturer is claiming that it is not under warranty, and they currently have our truck, and Jeff is attempting to negotiate with them to come to some sort of conclusion, whereas either we pay significantly less than they're asking for repairs, or hopefully it should be fully recovered, because the alleged maintenance that they're claiming the truck needs to have done is not reasonable or customary for this type of truck.
So what's the truck?
What's?
It's the new truck, it's about, what, two years old?
$2,020.
And it's still under warranty? And what's the debt, what's the nature of the problem?
It's a lot, it's a spring problem, it's basically the truck is frozen when it's, if it sits too long according to that, it's a big, it's a big problem.
And what, they're claiming that it's a, we didn't make, do proper maintenance?
They want us to maintenance the truck every time the truck moves, basically.
Anytime it's in a snowstorm, they're require, they're requiring that the wheels be removed.
And, and greased out.
Yes, and you can't do that with the wheels on. So you know the size of that truck. I mean, it's not.
I never heard of such a thing.
Thank you.
We had two internationals, and we had a Kenworth before this one that I've seen. We've always done our magisters, but it's always at the end of our seasons, after a snow season itself.
I mean, I kind of had a little experience with construction vehicles in those 40, I never heard of this. So how much is, how much is the repair?
About $3,000.
First they wanted four, now they want three.
Plus, we had to pay to have it towed.
$200 bucks in cash. We couldn't even.
Get out of here. Frank, we couldn't even get out of the garage.
But does that mean that we have to do this maintenance every time it snows?
Because we don't have to pay for building, we don't have.
Didn't they mention that when we bought the truck, that you gotta take the wheels off every time it wet?
That, that's, that's why Jeff is involved, because they're, they're.
It's too late for lenovo, it's like over a year.
So Jeff is busy working, hopefully we come to a conclusion, we get our truck back.
Yeah, but I'm worried that it's gonna happen again if you don't take the wheels off.
That's, we're trying to figure this whole thing out.
How do, do we even have a jack that could lift that thing?
No. Rich is a strong guy, but he can't, don't you trust that truck?
Governor, I can do that. The only other thing I've been reading up that it's a possibility is to cover the chamber of the brakes.
Can't you just break that, maybe four?
Yeah, Vaseline, put Vaseline on them or something.
It's a couple of things. I mean, once I get, once it gets back, there's something we can try, I'm gonna try to do that, at least try to.
And have you gone online to see if this is what other people have dealt with?
I was thinking that.
Yeah, that's what I do when I have like a problem.
It's easier on YouTube than online, you rent Honda Civic, but.
Well, no, no, I know, I know that, but I.
They must have sold it to other people too.
Yeah, I.
Like, how many of those trucks were sold in two, how many 2020 trucks, and can we get even three others?
I mean, because I had a problem with my new car, it's like a month, a serious problem. And when I Googled it, I found that I wasn't the only one that had this problem. So maybe there's other people that have a way to, a solution to.
I looked up for the Kenworth, it was really not.
Really?
What about any other villages that have this?
I called them, they said, "Is Kenworth on?"
No.
Can we sell it to somebody?
Now you're talking.
She has to wait over here to get that truck.
Yeah, well, yeah, but if you can't use it in, in wet weather, then it's kind of defeats the purpose of the truck.
I'm waiting for it to come back, I have something hopefully that will be.
But I'm sure Rich will figure something out.
I'm sure he will.
Because Rich is, this, this is the guy who instead of sending the street sweeper in, what do you pay, $40 for that part for the spring?
Yeah.
So Rich would fix the street sweepers at a service with a $40 spring he bought and installed himself, sending the truck in to cost us $500 to $1,000. So I have the utmost faith in Rich in maintaining his vehicles, so I'm sure.
Maybe you can blow dry them when it comes in from the rain.
No, it's really, it's really salted, it's, it's not just rain, it's, it's salted.
Well, yeah, salt is not.
Good, but these trucks are made for this purpose.
I mean, how do you sell, how do you sell a plow truck that can't be in the snow?
That's, that's how I got into a big fight with, you know.
Okay.
Alright, I think, I think we'll talk soon.
Uh, my report, our community is ongoing, we need to, we, we submitted a grant to the justice court grant program for new carpeting for here, this room. So we have to pass a resolution. The year resolved that the Village of Flower will authorize us to apply for JCAP grants, and I asked somebody to offer that resolution.
I'll offer the resolution.
And a second?
My second, I'm Mary Jo.
Okay, on paper?
Aye.
Okay.
Now you have to put the.
I forget it. Yeah, if you want, the reason we need new carpeting, because this is the question site, is the fall in place, and they told me to run carpet.
We should do carpet tile.
Well, actually, what we think that, what I think.
It's carpet tile, that's what we replaced.
They just replaced the carpet.
You can replace the tile. What, carpet tile? If you've ever been in facilities management, I mean, Gary will, carpet tiles are great, I mean, we use them in our projects all the time. Because if one, if, if you get a stain, you just replace the, you keep attic, what's called attic stock? You keep 10% or 20% attic stock, and you, you know, you pull that one out, put the new one in.
It just costs twice as much as rubber, that's all.
Yeah, it's a little more expensive, but, but you know what it, you don't have.
Is it on the sides?
Huh?
Is it on the sides?
Pretty much so, yeah, yeah. It's, it's.
Well, it's all modular, it's modular, so the pattern.
Yeah.
As long as you get direct, I mean, if it's, you gotta get it, you know, you can't go with any.
Let's see if we get the grant first, and we'll proceed from there.
Right, let's see if we get it, because we just got the call over in there, so my notes are not that high.
Yeah.
Okay, um, next, because in your package I put a copy of the 2023 meeting calendar.
Do we need to vote on the resolution?
Yeah, we did, Frank and Mary Jo.
Well, sorry.
No.
Okay, so, before.
No, I think, right, it was, no, so I, I seconded. We made the motion, we seconded, do you need to poll board?
Oh, well, thank you.
Right, you polled the.
Aye.
The carpeting, great.
Thank you, Brian.
If there's any problem, please let me know as soon as possible, because this has to be published in the paper.
By what?
Um, probably, yeah, beginning of December.
Publish in the paper or let you know by beginning of December?
No, let me know with which date is December.
Okay, so.
So I, I.
Let you know.
Because we have to publish prior, you know, so that it's timely for all the January meetings.
So because of a couple holidays, we needed to move some dates around, and I tried to make it that we wouldn't have a meeting three weeks after each other, or like six weeks. So when we moved around, I tried to make it so we still have a meeting every four weeks So when we moved them around, I tried to make it so we still have a meeting every four weeks when we have a conflict with a holiday.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, our teaching day dates are here.
I just wanted to make sure somebody made up till next board meeting to say, oh, there's a problem.
Yeah, no, I'd like to do it before this, you know, get, get this.
We'll give that to you in less than a week.
I hate to say, but we're going to these dates. Thank you.
Next. Can I just do with my?
Chips.
Chips, oh, yeah, I'd like to let the also the board know that we have been reimbursed one hundred percent to all our road project for this year. Of our chips, that's two hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. Thanks in part to a new program that the state has called A-R-C-H-O-L-S. And we still have a little money left out for next year. That's the good news.
And Rich will shortly be working on the grading, so we can start projecting what we're going to do for next year.
Need to find out, I got a national grade.
Yes, yes, Rich is always very good at keeping on top of those guys.
Yeah. Okay, as long as I'm talking, can I just go, skip ahead to the village financial statements?
Keep on going.
Okay, so I emailed, Suzanne emailed everybody a copy of the village's audit report. And you have a hard copy, that was in your mailboxes. So we are required to pass a resolution approving the financial statements, and once that's done, I'll be posting it on the website. Does anybody have any questions about the report?
So in the report, there were some very, very minor recommendations for some policy changes.
Yeah, yeah, and I've already like tagged on.
So in the upcoming short amount of time, we will probably adopt all of the small suggestions that they made. Very minor stuff, like dotting i's and crossing t stuff, so that's all they found in the, the order to this report, which is excellent news.
And I'm so happy with the new orders, because our old order used to like cite us every year for not tagging our equipment. Which is a kind of antiquated stuff.
Okay.
Use a tag on every chair or table. Anyway, um, somebody opened the resolution approving the financial statements?
Since I read this, I will make the resolution.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll say.
Chris D. Frank, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed, or stay, okay, thank you. Um, I'm done. Suzanne?
Go to Jeff.
Sure, a very short report, there was one here in last month, it was adjourned. There was a dimension that needed to be reconfigured, and I'm told they're returning back to the board this month with a new presentation.
Was there a case that was also held up?
No, there was one case, there was one more trial in that case. First meeting this case.
Okay.
I'm actually, Rich, we can, we skipped you, do you have a report?
No, I'm good.
That's why I put up the truck.
Truck, no, truck.
I have the truck.
Truck's problem. Listen, thank you for cleaning Middle Nick Road today. You made some suggestions, so we're gonna try to implement that, and.
How are we dealing with the ten thousand political signs after tomorrow? Rich is removing them on Wednesday.
Yeah, that's really annoying, and we have to, you know, we have to use our manpower.
Who says the bill to every campaign?
Yeah, I really think the campaigns should remove their own sign.
They absolutely should.
Absolutely, I mean, okay. And they put them in, but like wood stakes on the island, did you see that?
Yeah, they, some of them, they started putting wood stakes.
They hammered in wood stakes, and you gotta yank out now in the middle of the, of an island, of a, well, the stakes did come and clean it up a week or so ago. And isn't that, that's state property, correct?
Well.
Yes. The island, technically, you can't, you're not allowed to put a list aside on public property.
We should just leave them there, wait for the state to take.
Oh, you'll be the way.
Well, in the Flower Hill Tree City sign, oh, they take a state example.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah, yeah, yeah.
The signs will be down the mountain.
I think Brian wants. Because on some of our islands too.
My suggestion was that when the staff goes to clean up the islands and everything, they should take them, take them down, put them in the garage. We let the campaigns know, we have, our standing policy is, you know, if we see signs, we'll take them down, we'll put them in the garage, you can come back and pick them up.
Well, it's not our policy, you're not allowed to, they're not allowed to be on public.
Yeah, but we, we, we make, they don't come and mow the islands, right, we do.
Right.
So the state's not gonna come around and take it down, because we've taken over responsibility for that, so, you know. Whether, and it's, it was not just political, commercial or political, right? This is the guy who grows up the, you know, three guys with a truck, you know?
Yeah, the gym guys, the gym guys.
Yeah, it's just, you know, they're not supposed to be in the right of way, you know, as these guys are going and cleaning corners and areas.
Can we, can we find them?
Just take them down.
Like, what, you can't, like the gym guys, you can't find them for?
As a commercial signs, oh, yeah, we do, we send them.
Oh, we do?
Yeah.
And that doesn't stop them?
Not good political signs, because it's like, you know, first of all.
But that doesn't stop the.
We have a act, a code section that prohibits any commercial signs.
I realize that, but they don't, that doesn't deter them?
Well, no, I think it does.
You'll notice the signs that happen, it's usually, like, the gym guys will be there, then they'll be gone, and then the next company does it. So it's nature of course of vacuum when it comes to signs.
In my opinion, it's a traffic safety issue, right? That we have enough accidents along that road, the amount of signs that are there, it gets windy, they blow into the road.
Oh, those aren't going anywhere, the ones they put in the other day, they'll, they'll be there for years. They probably put little concrete footings in the bottom. They'll be, they'll be gone on Wednesday, Frank, but don't worry. All right, I've got some brings to bring up. Number one, if you have a chance to go by the cemetery, Brandon O'Neill, the Eagle Scout, did his project this weekend and put a very nice walking trail in our village cemetery. And cleaned up a lot of the ivy that were all over the place, and it's looking good. So thank you, Brandon, for doing that lovely project, and thank you, Mitchell, for the pictures.
Thank you for the reminder, Ronnie, I'll email you that when I get home later.
Oh, Rich is gonna be planting the tulips this week, or next week, so that's a good thing, we'll have more tulips on our roads and our flower beds.
Different colors.
Nice, yes, we won't have that weird.
No purple.
Purple, yeah. No more, Gary, purple is gone, don't worry. At the, I don't know if I ever got a number out there, but at that October COVID vaccine pop-up, forty-two vaccines were distributed. Ronnie, so forty-two vaccines were, were given at the October pop-up. Thank you, Brian, for being one of them. I guess I'll make the formal announcement that we have a new code enforcer, gentleman named Jack Van Cuzee. So Robert Rockline has moved out of state, and we wish him the best of luck. For those who have seen Jack driving around already, he pretty much exclusively will be using the code enforcer vehicle, which is some. Excellent. Saw him twice today, actually.
Good, this morning.
I'm sure he was right by the house near you where we had that garbage issue at his. Yes, he was. So he'll be out, being much more visible, he has a code enforcer vest, he has an ID, so he'll be very identifiable when he's out dealing with our residents and contractors. Due to the way we're using code enforcement compared to the way we used in the past with building department, there will be a significant taxpayer savings. Because we're gonna be using our code enforcer, I'll say differently, with different hours. So we'll be saving a significant amount of money, and I can give you the guys, you guys, the members, next meeting, I just haven't been able to count, I don't have the calculation. The Landmark Commission is meeting this week?
Thursday.
Thursday?
Last.
Isn't tight. There are four properties that are up for potential for landmarking, one being the Flower Hill Cemetery, the other one, the Elder Fields Preserve. What's the name of the house on Shore Road?
Eastman Carrick House.
Thank you, and the fourth property is?
The Sands Bar.
Oh, it's right in front of me, the Sands Bar, if I looked at my piece of paper. So that meeting will happen on Thursday, and then those properties, if they pass through the Landmark Commission, will then come to the Board of Trustees for the board to ratify. At a future board meeting. What's, I don't know the Eastman Carrick House. It's this beaut, Mitchell can probably forward you the web link to it. You really can't, can you see it?
You look carefully behind the trees, you can't.
Is it on the other, it's on the water side?
You're protecting that flower on the side, yeah.
Yes.
It's on the side of the slope.
Oh. So they built that new house, like over there?
Yes.
Yeah, just one of them.
Hmm, interesting. Yeah, it's, it has some pretty good history, so it's definitely something. And it has a road that goes through?
It's right over there.
They have driveways, they have driveways to the property, they're cold.
It's, it's the house next to the George Dent House.
Oh, okay, interesting. Didn't know, is it, yeah, I don't see it, I guess.
Yeah.
Election Day is tomorrow, so please come out and vote for your favorite candidate. We're going to be doing the Toys for Tots Drive Again, and the box is gonna be installed very shortly.
We have toys, no, we have.
Yes.
We also have food drive.
Well, that'll be trustee reports when we get to that. I'm going to appoint the members of our Budget and Finance Committee, because I think we're gonna start to meet earlier this year to make sure that our, we have a nice, robust budget like we have in the past. So I'm appointing Deputy Mayor Harrington, Frank Janese, and a resident, A.J. Smith, who I've met with, who has some pretty good background, and I think will be a very good addition to the committee. That's it for me. Let's go to trustees' report, and now we'll pivot to the food drive.
So we have a meeting with the JCC and with the Vincent Smith School. We're gonna do things a little bit differently this year, it'll still look the same if anybody is donating food. But all food will go to the JCC, because they are now a distribution point for the other pantries in the area. So previously, we were going directly to St. Peter's, earlier Fatima, now everything will go to JCC. But what I think is really neat this year is, at the Vincent Smith School, they also have a vocational program, where they have students that are learning, you know, skills that could be applied in future jobs. And so the students are going to sort the food by expiration date, by type, they're also going to weigh it, they're then going to package it, and then it will be delivered to the JCC, either Dylan or I, we'll figure that out. So they're gonna continue their food drive at the school, and they will then sort it, but also anything that gets dropped off here or that we pick up, they will also bring to the school, and they will make it part of the vocational program. The students that are participating will be able to sort it all out.
Do we remember how many pounds of food was donated last year? It was, it was a lot, it was huge.
I can look, I have, I have that at home, I don't remember off the top of my head, because we talked about it.
You might have put it in the newsletter, I think that's what.
Yeah.
Well, hopefully we'll surpass.
We should get some cool statistics out of this.
Well, if they're gonna be weighing and doing all the stuff, we can actually get some stats, it'll be very good.
Can I make a suggestion for maybe an event? And I thought about this last year, we forgot about it, but she needs the election day. But if you want, maybe we ask Flower Hill Women's Club if, at the lighting.
Oh, great idea.
Invite everybody to spring, uh, animal food.
Claire is a member of the women's club, so that's perfect.
And, I mean, I'll, I'll park my truck there, we can sort in the back of the truck, we can take it there.
I love that idea, I think that's great.
Awesome. You gotta do a lot of reminding people that, like, hey, it's, it's in the office, right? If they remember to bring it.
They didn't tell them, could you show them?
Focus on the.
It's right over there.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
They brought us an official, I, I walked right back.
Yeah, no, it's right there.
I was late, so.
It's all right, it's the worst. And then we'll, again, if there's too much food, we'll help you with the village trucks, so you don't have to be using your own lungs. Vehicles, or pick up trucks, they store lots of food.
Perfect, awesome.
Perfect. Any other trustee reports? Anything going on with Manhasset Bay or Hempstead Harbor? Of note, or same old? Okay, excellent. Gary, nothing? Okay. All right, old business, I have a, I have a memo to read about Extonet. So the good news is that the appeal, actually, no, I'm gonna read the statement instead. "On behalf of the entire board and the village itself, I'm very pleased to report that the village has now fully and finally won its long-pending and hard-fought legal battle with Extonet. The village and its special legal counsel were able to successfully demonstrate to the court that the village board had reasonably considered relevant wireless citing factors, including any alleged coverage needs, and relevant aesthetic and citing considerations, based on a comprehensive record, and that there was substantial evidence for the board's denial. In addition, although Extonet filed an appeal, Extonet ultimately withdrew its appeal, and as a result, the appeal was dismissed with prejudice, and the case is now officially over." Yeah, I know, very, very exciting news. "Prior to Extonet's recent withdrawal of its appeal, several industry watch groups and publications reported on Flower Hill's significant legal victory, describing the case as a landmark decision. A village attorney, Mr. Blinkoff, is continuing to monitor legal developments in this area, and the board has also undertaken steps to further update its wireless code. Mr. Blinkoff anticipates being in a position to provide further updates at a future board meeting on those efforts." So I'd like to thank you, Jeff, and I'd like to thank Ed Ross for all of their efforts on, on, on a great legal defense, and this is very exciting news for the village.
I know, I asked that out to Mr. Ross, who I spoke with this morning, and who indicated that he'll be filing out further steps for review and touching base with the board.
Right, because we do want to update our code accordingly.
Do you need your heels on, Ted?
This is a big.
Great job, everybody.
Every other village has gotten those, because we haven't.
Thanks to the council, too.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, we had a great judge.
So that being said, I'd like to make a motion to briefly enter executive session to discuss a potential lawsuit? I guess that's the way to determine. Do I have a second?
I'll say it.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Rich, if you wanna kill the camera. Thank you, everybody, for attending.
Thank you.